In touch. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To you, I'm the president of the Dober Rovers ATV Club. On your god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, Paul, uh, present the evidence on, uh, the Zoom connect. What else is in there in common course? We'll all have the members that are. Does anyone have a contract interest regarding any agenda items tonight? About a motion to approve the each sentence.
That's it.
All over the table.
You can ask Tracy.
Although, Tracy, yeah, Tracy's nodding his head.
Yes.
All right, um, second item is approval of minutes from our last meeting on page twelve. Is motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Tracy, you okay with minutes?
I am good with it.
Oh, yeah, right, name? Daisy? Name? Well, we don't have any, um, special items. So we'll move directly to open session for a public hearing. Um, the, the request for new ATV public access of our roadways. So if you haven't been to a meeting recently, let me just go over the ground rules. First of all, it's good to see so many people sitting here. The purpose of this meeting is a public hearing. We actually want to hear from the public on your opinions of, of this proposal. And, uh, we will first hear from, uh, representatives of the Dover Rovers ATV Club, who have a presentation that I think we'd all benefit from hearing the details on that. Uh, after the presentation, then I'll open it up. And anyone in the audience who wants to make a comment or ask a question about what you heard, we'll entertain those comments and questions. I would just ask that you, uh, catch my attention so that I can identify you. And, uh, I'd like that after that happens, then for you to identify yourself before speaking. And typically, uh, we like to have people say their, their minds in, uh, three minutes or less. After that, uh, what I'd like to do is hear from everyone who wants to speak. So I'd like to have people have one comment, uh, uh, to start with. If we do get through everyone, then someone has a follow-up comment, we'll go back and, and let people do that too. So the, the goal here is to hear from as many people who want to say something on this, on this point. And the only thing that the public hearing is about is the ATV access question. There is a public, uh, open session right after that. Any other questions you have about town business or comments on Dover Fox Trot in general, that's a time to make that during the open session to the public. So the, the public hearing is just about the ATV access. Uh, after the public has their chance to comment, then the select board, I'm sure, has some questions and comments about that too. So we'll, we'll, um, go on that, uh, assumption. So, um, Alex and Ashley, well, take it away. And we have a presentation that could be on the, the screen over here to my left.
Can we just encourage those people to come around?
There are some places over here on this wall, if you want to sit over on the radiator, that's a.
It's not on.
It's not on, right? You, you won't get.
Just spark that up.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Hey.
All right, good evening. I'm Alex Robinson, president of the Dover Rovers ATV Club.
I'm Ashley Robinson, secretary of Dover Rovers ATV Club. And we have a presentation that we'd like to share tonight on behalf of the Dover Rovers.
As the ATV industry, as the ATV industry continuously thrives across the state of Maine, the Dover Rovers ATV Club is dedicated to integrating Dover Fox Trot into this expansion.
In recent years, the Dover Rovers have grown in numbers by an exponential amount. We are committed to being a family-oriented club, bringing more to the table than just ATV riding.
Who are the Dover Rovers?
We are a family-oriented group, dedicated to hard work and robbery, striving to give back. With numerous events and fungraces under our belts, partnerships with many businesses, we are proud to be the Dover Rovers. So there are two topics tonight that we'd like to speak with you about. Uh, so please hold all questions completely.
On our agenda this evening are, is selected road access to ATV traffic and a designated parking right. The state of Maine had a record eight, record-breaking eighty-two thousand machines registered in the two, twenty-twenty-one season. Last year, seventy-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven were registered in Maine. Of those, one hundred and eighty-eight registered at Dover Fox Trot Town Office and a hundred and eighty-five at Dover Town Office. Their economic impact in state of Maine ATV enthusiasts is approximately seven hundred and fifty million dollars. We've included a visual with statistics provided by the state of Maine, show growth of ATV registration over the past few decades.
So our first topic tonight is road access. Uh, we believe that Dover Fox Trot should be a destination rather than just a pass-through town. Currently, very few businesses in town are benefiting from ATV traffic. By opening new roads, we can boost business revenue and support their growth. Businesses in Dover Fox Trot are missing a significant opportunity to capitalize on this growth because of limited trail access to many locations.
In recent years, the state of Maine has developed a large parking ride in Newport area. And ATV enthusiasts can currently only travel, travel north from there. Dover Fox Trot, located at the northern end of the railroad bed, should ideally be a hotspot for our district sport.
The Dover Rovers ATV Club is fully aware of the concerns expressed by the citizens of Dover Fox Trot regarding how increased ATV traffic might impact our town and traffic patterns. We have thoroughly considered the best routes to take in order to maximize benefits for our local businesses while minimizing any potential effects on our community. In October twenty-twenty-three, the Dover Rovers initiated our first annual haunted trail ride, the only one of its kind in the state of Maine, um, as a fun end-of-season event for riders. Uh, in our first year, we welcomed eighty-three machines and two hundred and nineteen attendees. This past year, participation more than tripled to an impressive three hundred and seventy-one machines, six hundred and sixty-eight people. This event has attracted riders from across the state, even reaching participants from as far away as Florida. Uh, we also welcome many riders from New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and beyond. Channel Five News visited Dover Fox Trot the week before our event to capture sneak peeks of our trail, providing Dover Fox Trot and our club with valuable promotional exposure, which helped bring swarms of ATV traffic to town the day of the event. The Newport parking ride was overly full with riders headed to our town. Business boomed for Urbings and the Bear Den that day, and we would like to see this extend beyond these two locations.
An enforcement grant is available to the town for initiatives like this, which could help monitor the roads during this event or even allow controls on the trails utilizing ATV that could be purchased through the grant. We strongly encourage the town to explore and consider this opportunity for our sake, as well as taking many other local events that could benefit from this initiative. At this time, please refer to the first page of your handout.
You? Some people might take that packet, screen.
Our first route that we would like you to consider tonight is Red's Trail, named in honor of Red Mountain, founder of Mountain's Market. On this route, we would like to access Forestry, where the trail already crosses and heads south towards Wally Avenue, taking a right off Wally and accessing Paul Street to be able to access Belly of the Beast, Little Bird, uh, Mountain's Sport Shop and Mountain's Market, along with Overy Enterprises. And we'd like also to continue on Wally towards Sanford Street, to take Sanford Street, feel the access and ATM at Bank, uh, Main Highlands, and also, um, Back Home Pharmacy, which is a meat market, um, and Butterfield's Ice Cream. And then head back. And on this route, Travis from Mounts has offered his back parking lot as also a ATV parking. Here's a list of the businesses that would be benefi- benefited by opening these roads, many of which are business members of the Dover Rovers, including Mountain's Market, uh, Sport Shop, Overy Enterprises. Where it'd also be accessed, Main Highlands Federal Fair Union, Mayo Regional Hospital, Fairview Beach. Sorry, do you? Along with many more.
Okay, on your next map, you can see Route Two, refer to a blood trail in recognition of Abil Blood, an original settler of Dover Fox Trot. Um, so, all right, this trail, this route would start at the railroad bed on, uh, Fairview, from down to the Essex Street Bridge, cross the bridge up to the corner by Ware Butler. Um, and then we would travel down East Main Street to Bangor Savings Bank, where we would tuck in Port Street and be able to access the parking lot behind Union Square Mall, where people could walk to any of the downtown businesses from there. Uh, then on the way out, we would take the one-way portion of River Street back, um, to the bridge. And then also take the short section of River Street to Route Fifteen to be able to get down to Dover Handy Stop for gas, snacks, et cetera, and back. So this one has quite a large list of businesses that would be greatly impacted by ATV business should this trail be opened. Again, including many of our business sponsors such as Dover Two Value, Ralph's Garage, Dover Handy Stop, Pat's Pizza, Edward Brothers, Dover Redemption, uh, Thompson Free Library, Elliot Manor, Ravens Attic East, Bangor Savings Bank, where there's another ATM, Central Hall Commons, Dover Fox Trot Police Department, Center Theater, and many more.
And if you look to map three of your handout, let's see our third route. This route begins at the Garland Town Line, where we would connect with our neighbor and club, the Garland Trail Hawks. And head down the Nott Road, be able to access the Causeway at Friends Mills, where you could, um, enjoy fishing, picnicking, and other outdoor activities. Local section there.
This is for, uh, Garland Trail Hawks have asked us to open this so they can get to the Causeway. It's actually the next to our trails, so we're doing this as a friendly neighbor club request.
Well, on, um, on map four of your handout, there's a additional route with being access to all businesses mentioned in Route Two before, during, and after the Essex Street Bridge construction. And on this trail, we would come off the railroad bed just south of the Trestle and head towards the airport, cross the airport, and access the industrial park. And head down Engdahl Drive, or we cross Route Seven, and get on Borough Street, head down there, short little section of Pleasant Street, be able to connect with the routes to at the end of Dover, where all of the other businesses will be able to be accessed.
Okay, so that's on topic one, and so topic two is designated parking ride area.
Please refer to the last map of your handout, it shows property lines that's the public's location.
Dover Rovers aim to expand parking options for recreational development in Dover Fox Trot and believe that Gate Three at the fairgrounds can serve as an ideal location, providing direct access to the railroad bed.
Currently, A Robinson's is the sole parking area for ATVers. While this will remain available, we feel that an officially designated Dover Rovers parking lot could significantly enhance opportunities for the ATV industry in Dover Fox Trot.
The Dover Rovers have already established signage and maintained an ATV trail map in a kiosk at this location, offering riders helpful information for their journeys.
Scatulus Valley Fair Association fully supports the club in making this vision a reality, and it's offered fairgrounds for overclothe parking.
At this time, the Scatulus Valley Snowmobile Club has graciously offered to share their clubhouse at Snow Pond with the Dover Rovers for our monthly meetings. However, the building is in disrepair, and the Snowmobile Club is uncertain how much longer they can maintain it. Access from the clubhouse is challenging, and additionally, there is no ATV access available. A future goal for our club would be to potentially construct a new clubhouse, possibly in collaboration with the Snowmobile Club, creating a Four Seasons facility located right on the trail.
Here you can see an outline of the property at this location, butting the railroad bed as well as the fairgrounds. In conclusion, the Dover Rovers ATV Club would like to gain permission from the town of Dover Fox Trot to, number one, allow selected roads and access to ATV traffic to enhance business growth and economic development in Dover Fox Trot. And number two, allow the Dover Rovers to lease gate-free of the fairgrounds for designated parking ride and have the potential to build clubhouse in the future, possibly in conjunction with this one.
So on behalf of the directors, officers, members, business supporters, and friends of the Dover Rovers ATV Club, we'd like to thank you for your timely consideration. A special thank you to the town manager for all her help and support on this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, uh, in, in anticipation of the public hearing, the town did manage to mail out the notification for one hundred and fifty-five abutting property owners on the affected routes that are just now outlined for you. So, uh, the goal here from people of both who are ATV riders and also property owners who might not have anything to do with ATV riders, but would have their, that, that traffic over to your neighborhood. So looking for comments, see the phone call or, or news log. Uh, again, if you'd like to speak, you raise your hand, I'll recognize you. You can identify yourself, then we're off, yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Barbara Olstead, and I live on Forestry, which there is a trail, as was said tonight. And as far as I know, I've been there five years, and I've never heard or seen anything that would be a negative value for something like this. And I do support this club, and, uh, it would be great for our businesses. They might even bring more potential business for us.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Green, lived in this town since nineteen sixty-eight. And, uh, this is kind of a simple way of looking at it. Anytime that you can burden extra people into your town, that's more money for the town and more money for the people in the town. It'll take that little extra money to probably make this happen and keep track of it with the police department. But that goes on with every town that has ATV access. So, yeah, I'd say it would be a good thing for this town to make a little money for it. Thank you.
Uh, add to one of the that, yes, sir.
I'm all set for bringing the people into the town.
Good day.
Um, you talked about.
Good day, sir.
Uh, Nate Darian Elliott, uh, Elliott Manor. Corner of Essex and Lincoln.
Yeah.
I'm all for bringing business to the town. I'd rather not have them go buy my business. Uh, we have an Airbnb, we have nurses, doctors to stay there, um. You know, once you get taken and enforced it, keep it down, what, fifteen miles an hour? That'd be all right, um. Now, you also mentioned a, a trail on the other side of the river, right? Your own road street? Okay, just have that as the main access, and, and we link in right there.
If our parking ride.
And you, why, why don't you, uh, address a couple of things, uh, Alex? Number one, signage that will be involved in the, on the enforcement standards, uh, for traffic control, things like that.
Should we stand up and be like answering these questions?
Right.
Okay.
Whatever makes you comfortable.
So as far as signage, we, uh, the club have traveled these routes by car and kind of mapped out where we would like signage, but we have also spoken with some members of the select board, and as Finn mentioned, that we, we've agreed to meet with the protection committee, and they would, they know more about the signage that is required within the town. And, um, as far as, uh, enforcement, that is part of the enforcement grant, but since you may be able to speak more on enforcement.
Yeah, so with ATVs, when ATVs are operating on a public plane, they have to abide by same laws that a vehicle have to abide by. Um, in this case, the speed limit for an ATV, um, likely in that area would be fifty miles an hour, and yes. So ATVers have to abide by that, and if they don't, we have the ability to, uh, enforce that.
And so cars are ridden by us at forty miles an hour, and no one's ever out there stopping or.
Well, that's.
Giving tickets.
That is something that we are working on addressing right now, and hopefully with the passage of the new budget, that, uh, will give us a little bit more freedom to be able to.
Uh, maybe a, maybe a stop sign with a yield sign is, that would help.
That one's a little bit above my, my head, but I don't decide where stop signs and yield signs go. So that would already be something.
We did speak a little bit on the sign that, I think there's studies that have to happen, but I don't think that could be at least talked about. And I, I feel that the enforcement grant, where you have to, you don't get it right away, but that might put a patrolman on these problem areas or areas of concern.
Yeah, and to speak directly to the enforcement grant, what the enforcement grant would look like from our standpoint, is that would provide funding to retail officers specifically for ATV owners, uh, around these trails that would be accessed.
Other comments? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Nelson Stevens, High Street. We all heard the figures, seven hundred and fifty million dollars if ATVs bring revenue to the state of Maine. The last count, I counted ten, closed up storefronts in the town of Dover Fox Trot. I see this as a great opportunity to jumpstart the economy in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, yes, sir.
My name's Peter Dennis, uh, uh, my wife and I are on a business in Dover. We're a member of the Chamber of Congress for the last eight years. Um, we fully support the ATV club and, uh, believe their plan is safe and will boost our local economy. I challenge the select board in the town to not be scared of change and allow this plan to move forward. I personally am tired of seeing businesses failing because they can't stay busy. The Milk Cafe just, uh, now they're shutting down, their business is low. Um, and that's just one example of many businesses that shut down. Uh, I think this will boost our local economy and significantly help a bunch of, uh, businesses that are missing out on this opportunity. And so I think it's almost crazy to not explore this and give this a shot. Um, Alex and the club have, uh, and Ashley have done a great job of doing their homework and research, and they have put in a significant amount of their personal time to try to, um, make this and, and show that they're serious about safety and how they want to help the town. Um, my wife's born and raised in Dover, we came back here, tried to be part of this community, but honestly, sometimes it kind of sucks here, there's nothing to do, there's nothing to eat, and you can get a pizza delivered to our house. I would love to buy an expensive side-by-side and drive around in Dover and spend money. And I know when I go on snowmobiles and other trips to other towns, when I stop, I'm getting gas, I'm getting food, I'm spending money on trinkets, and you're going to multiply that hundreds and hundreds of times over if, if this plan is allowed. So I believe it's a great opportunity for the town, and we both, uh, support this one hundred percent.
Thank you, Dave.
Other comments? Yes, in that row? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Claire Hall, a lot of you know who I am, I'm on Lincoln Street. And, uh, maybe it's selfish, but, uh, that's a quiet street, I'd like to keep it quiet. I know just, just the tip of that's being affected, coming down from Fairview Avenue. But I'm also a walker, I walk that route routinely on a daily basis. Uh, you know, the East Lane Street all the way around is one point three miles. Um, there's a, at least a third of, uh, of that loop that's affected by, uh, going across the bridge to East Main Street, I'm assuming right by, uh, by the bank, Bangor Savings Bank. It cuts down from the, to River Street, I'm not sure. So, anyway, that's, you know, I, I'm pro-business, but, but I think maybe take a look at that. I mean, this is not cast in stone, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking this is what you'd like to have happen.
Yep.
Um, again, I'm kind of selfish, I, I like the quiet. Um, by and large, you know, they're not noisy machines, there are some that are noisy. Uh, we've got a little bit of a problem because somebody that, uh, comes down Lincoln Street and goes all the way across the bridge and over on River Street, but, uh, that's just usually on weekends, I don't see it during the week. Yeah.
Um, as far as the noise, if, um, a stock ATV is typically quiet. Um, I believe it's when studied eighty deciles at fifty feet, which is similar to local traffic and, uh, lawnmower foot in. Right? Probably five miles out. And if, if, if there's a loud machine and they're illegal, they have, uh, modified exhaust. So that's a part where the enforcement would step in and say, you're down, like, giving a ticket, anyway. But thank you for your.
Yes. Yes. I think. Yes, background?
Actually, maybe you spoke about it, I think I would be late, but I, I wondered if in your plan, you're planning on like porta potties and some of these rest places? And threatening trash being picked up? I mean, that's a big problem on the ATV trail already, is the amount of trash. I know, and I can yell once a week all the time. So I, I'm happy to have a trail, it's great, I think it's wonderful, but is there something in the plan that addresses like those people?
Yep, so right now we have, getting delivered next week, we have a porta potty on our trail system. And we end in Sevack Home Infernal Road. Right now, we're placing a porta potty there, it's kind of mid-location between Sevack and Dover. But we plan if, if we do get parking rights and the town allows it, then we would have something there.
And it'll be on the signage also, because that hospital, that.
Uh, that could be, and we're definitely open to suggestions. So, and we did a.
Far as trash.
Yeah.
Um, so any club member, because out, yesterday I was out and found two pieces of trash. One actually was a registration, something dropped, so we'll mail that after me. Um, so we stopped, so any club member that's out, stops and takes some trash. Um, we've also talked to some of our business sponsors who suggest, um, putting trash cans out in certain locations with maybe their, maybe they sponsored this trash can. Um, so it will be up to our club, of course, to empty the trash cans once a week or whatever. We have a trail master, the paint shirt right next to you, who goes out, monitors the trails, make sure everything, everything is up to date. So he'll be, we have to, we would go together and certainly, you know, do our best to make sure.
That'd be great.
That trash is leaving here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm definitely. Um, I'm John Neff, I live on the Dexter Road, and I run the library in town, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the library when I say this. Um, we've seen a lot of the towns around us benefit from having improved and greater ATV access. Greenville and Milo have recently instituted, so have you heard any problems in talking to Greenville or Milo?
So essentially what I heard, because I've also spoken with the Dexter chief, uh, they have a limited access to Dexter to, uh, some other roads to get to certain locations. Um, what is consistent between all three of them is the first year, they saw, you know, an increase in complaints related to noise and stuff like that. Uh, but as each year goes by, those complaints become fewer and fewer. Um, neither town has had any significant crashes or anything like that involved on a public way. Uh, so really, the bulk of the complaints are noise-related, um, with some speed-related, but the bulk is part noise-related. But again, as the years go by, it kind of defones, like Alex said, it's about the. But again, as the years go by, it kind of becomes like Alex said, it's about the same volume as lawnmower. And I think one thing to keep in mind is that very rarely are you going to have twenty-five or thirty ATVs go by a one block. It's probably very likely going to be one here, two or three there, another one today. What I gathered from talking to these chiefs is that after the first year, it kind of just becomes another piece of road noise. Like a loud motor cycle that comes by. Wow. So take that. You know, the grain is salt because it's something we've experienced here yet. You know, I don't have any firsthand knowledge on it, um, but it's just feedback I got.
Can I elaborate on that a little bit?
Sorry.
Bobby, uh owner of Pass Pizza. So when Milo um opened up the trail systems, that was, I think, um either ten or eleven years ago. And at that time I was a selectman on the board and I'm the one that initiated to open up this, the roads for the town of Milo. And I worked in conjunction with Chief uh Damian Pecel at the time and we had, you know, there was a lot of support for it. And we only opened up Main Street from CNJ's down to uh House of Pizza to start off. And in that first year, you can guess that most of the complaints would come from teenagers, kids on ATVs or motorcycles. And Damian quickly would, you know, assess the situation, go and talk to these kids, talk to their parents and say, you know, listen, you, you've got to monitor each other and that they're doing the proper things. But also he would go to the ATV president and say, listen, you guys need to self-govern. And I think you'll find with ATVers and side by siders that as a club, they will self-govern everyone. Um, and I'm sure you, you would agree with that, um, because we don't want one or two people to ruin it for hundreds or potentially thousands of people that there comes to our community. I just wanted to elaborate, but I'll just let you go.
Can I, can I just really quickly, sorry, feedback on his comment about kids and teenagers?
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Casey Retano. I'm actually the um treasurer for the club. And I think that I would rather have my, I've got a fourteen-year-old at home. I would rather have my kid on an ATV out having a good time. That might be where the noise complaint is coming from or the speeding complaint or something along those lines. But I think as far as crime goes, I think if we can find something for our kids to do and, and um grabbing their fishing pole, jumping on their ATV and heading, you know, heading to a local fishing pole instead of, you know, driving down, you know, Lincoln Street and causing havoc and.
I like to say that. Just know in this room.
Yeah, I'm Rich Hoffman, Trail Master of Dexter Rail Riders. Uh, we have eighteen streets opening in Dexter. I had it open for four years now. And uh, we haven't had no problem. We have a curfew at eight o'clock. There's some exceptions. If you're coming from Greenville, you run late, you get lost, whatever. That's fine, but we have a curfew. And the reason why we opened so many roads is because what happens is you'll get an ATV out there and they know they're not on a road legal and they, they'll go like bad out of health and cause more problem, more noise and everything else. It was better to open the road and have them do the speed limit than to have them go speeding through so they wouldn't get caught. So uh, we haven't had no problems in Dexter. And as far as enforcing the speed, technically if it's a uh access route, uh this posted speed limit is legal to the four-wheeler as long as the council decides to make it official for your town to make it fifteen, five miles or whatever. We have streets like that. Another thing is too, we get a lot of people on air that have OUI problems, you know, and you can't drive a four-wheeler on the street after your twenty-two years of age. Until then, I mean, you're fine up to that, but you've got to have a driver's license. Just like you said, you've got to, you're treated just the same as an automobile on the road. And we've, I've been to a meeting to the State of Maine. They are forcing, they're going to be forcing ATVs to have insurance on their, on their vehicles. So until then, but like I said, opening roads makes a big difference. Then it cuts the speed. I did it with, I've been, Alex knows who I am. And I've been with the Garland Club. I started with them. I've been with the club now, uh doing ten years, over ten years. So but opening the roads, uh to gain access, if you've got one closed and then people need it, they know it's a shortcut, you leave that closed, they're going to go all the more problems. And we do a curfew. It works out pretty good. Everything's been good. We really have no complaints at all.
Thank you. No, you've already spoken, so I want to get.
We had, we had four cuts. My, my main point, and thank you for everyone who chimed in, uh, but my main point is I think we have the leadership on the select board, all of you, Alcina and the PD that we can make this happen. Uh, there's also great leadership with the club. Uh, we've had a lot of issues in years past, especially like Foxcroft Center Road. That turned into kind of a mess. You guys have really turned it around. Um, I think no one's more aware than the ATV club members that we only have one shot at this. Um, if there are complaints, if that gets back to you, it gets shut down. Everyone knows that. It's very much self-policing. There could be some disruptions to downtown, but like we said, there's already motorcycles, there's trucks jake braking. Uh, but we're not going to tell Pleasant River to shut down. You know, we're already making concessions for economic reasons. Um, Pat's and Center Theater could be destinations for those on the trail in addition to all the other ones that you mentioned. Um, and so if we work with the Dover Rovers to make a plan that's right for the town, this really could be a win-win for everyone. I think this is a real opportunity to put something together we can all agree on, rather than one side winning or losing. And like I said, I'm, I think we should all just be open to the idea of it. And it seems like they have a great plan together. I think the town could work together to get this done. And I think that's it.
John? Yes, sir.
My name's Kevin Sargent. I live straight across the street from Mountains. Um, I was one hundred percent on board with this until this weekend. And I'm still mostly on board with it as long as it's done correctly. Um, over the weekend I watched the guy on a four-wheeler at someone in a car and I don't know if they're in this room get into an argument in the Mountains parking lot. When the argument was done, the guy on the four-wheeler gunned it across the street onto the sidewalk and down the sidewalk to Paul Street to get back to the trail. So I'm wondering if you could kind of provide a little more detail as how much of West Main Street is going to be available. Uh, you know, I have, I have a kid in high school. He and his friends are walking there all the time. We have dogs there. I am absolutely not against it, but I'm just kind of curious as to how much detail you could go into on how much.
Sure. So I'd say we pull the map up really quick on that section. So we haven't really got quite into this, did a little bit, but so all signage for this is not going to be paid for by the town by taxes or anything. All the signage will be paid for by us as a club. This will be three to four thousand dollars that we have to invest as a club to make this happen. So we would work with the protection committee and absolutely make sure that everything was signed as much as possible. Um, so we don't want, we, we want to stay off the main roads. We want to try to stay on the back roads. We don't want to be on the roads at all. You know, ATVers want to be in the woods. We don't want to be riding through town for fun. We just want to be able to get to businesses, support their growth. So Dover has more to do on an ATV besides Irving's and the Bearsden and that's it. So we would put signage right past Mountains at where it would stop, uh that says end access. So you can only, so essentially they should be crossing the street into the parking lot and going behind Mountains Market to park back there. I guess they could probably park in the front as well, but we would put a sign like on the side of the building, ATV parking this way. Um, and then same thing here, we would not want them to come. So only anything in pink is where they would be allowed to go. We would not want them to come right here. So there would be another end access sign here. So they would have to travel back up to clear signage and arrows and come down Sanford Street, same thing, end access. So you could go up towards the high school. So right now you can get to Irving's Subway, McDonald's, and that's it really, that end of town. So if we could get to this section of town and the other section of town, that would hit all of the businesses in town. Like that's pretty much it. And we want to take backroads to get to all these places who are not driving on the main road. We don't want to go through downtown. We don't want to go through the lights. We want to just go the backest way possible to minimize any impact on traffic patterns.
Thank you. So one thing last, real quick, I think to address the concern of going on the sidewalk. If with the ATV, when, if this gets approved, people on ATVs would know you don't have to use the sidewalk up there. That brief section of West Main Street, you just skip off and stay on the roadway of, you know, they wouldn't need to go on the sidewalk to access Paul Street. They just use that brief, you know, what is it? I don't know how many feet of West Main Street it is from where they come out of the parking lot to access Paul Street, but it's not too much right there. To answer that question.
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I, uh, well, the select board did in Milo is when we approved it, is we tracked the letter to Berson and asked for permission to put all signage on the telephone poles and they wrote a letter back and allowing us to do that, which made it a lot easier for the ATV clubs to put their signage because obviously there's telephone poles all over the place. I'm just, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't want to use the plastic ATV signs. You know, the yellow arrows and the, we want to use the actual metal reflective signs everywhere.
Those, those are the only signs you can use on the secondary roads is access route, DOT approved signs.
Yes.
They're twelve by eighteen. You cannot use, you can only use a vinyl sign if it's pointing to go into a trail. But other than that, the State of Maine won't support it and they, and they don't want to see, I know they do it, but they don't like seeing a vinyl sign stapled to the.
No, we want everything to be official. And again, our club would be paying for all of this and it wouldn't come out of any taxpayer money.
Right, right.
It comes out of our fundraising and our business support numbers.
Other people have not spoken yet.
Yeah, my name's Darren Culberry. I own Culberry Enterprises in town. I want to thank the club for commemorating a trail after my grandfather Red Mountain. Uh, he would think that that's pretty cool and I'm calling for it.
Where, where there's very little to lose here, um, I can see no reason to not jump on this privilege that um that the club is looking for. Um, the, the whole point of a privilege is that it can be revoked. Um, so in the event that anything were to come about that this town was completely against on fair grounds, uh, this privilege could be revoked. Um, but let's try it. Um, let's give this a whirl and give the club the, you know, benefit of the doubt that maybe the one percent that, that have something against it. Um, because we're, if you're against this, um, you're kind of worried about the one percent of uh unruly riders, negligent riders. Um, let's give this a shot. Let's, let's give this community, um, you know, some sense of pride and and you know, let's, let's boost some, some economic growth and let's make this town not just a pass through. Um, let's, let's get people coming to Dover, Foxcroft and, and seeing, you know, what we actually have to offer. I know it's very little, but to be able to access Belly of the Beast or, or Mountains Market or Butterfields or Pet's Pizza, um, Hammy's Stop. Those are all options. Um, you know, being, being uh excluded to just A E Robinson or Bear's Den. Look at how they've uh kind of monopolized that, you know, not by choice. Like they may probably be overwhelmed at times, but um, I just would just advise the board to, to really consider just uh giving this a shot. Thanks.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
So my name is Larry Dagan. I am uh the Trail Master for the Abbott Explorers. Uh, we're celebrating our twentieth year of our club this year. So we've got a little experience in exactly some of the things that they want to try. One of the things that we've found is to kind of piggyback Mr. Culberry's. We actually have contracts with the town that are renewable. So our club actually has contracts with the town of Gilford, the town of Abbott and the town of Miles, of Monclova. Those contracts delineate what our responsibilities are, what the towns request uh. And when the trails are open, which are typically from fun season to the first lasting snow of the season, we, we have that. We do the signage, which Ashley is talking about and what Rich is talking about. And a couple of the other points, we have porta potties, we have trash cans. We have a parking ride. We actually have a porta potty in the woods. And the one in the woods, we have a gentleman that every week he goes and cleans it. We thank you very much for that. He cleans it, takes the trash. So we have addressed all of those issues. And as far as the parking ride is concerned, we are the beginning of the connection in Bingham, Greenville, Rockwood. And what we have found, the State of Maine actually has trail counters that they will put out. A normal weekend, we have three to four hundred units a day going by the outhouse. Is it a major trail reception? A holiday weekend, Fourth of July, six to seven hundred units go by. That's a lot of ability to tap into. Even if you grab ten or fifteen percent of those people going by. I think that's going to be a great thing to do.
It's helpful to hear the experiences from other towns, Abbott, Dexter, Monroe. It helps inform us.
And one more thing.
What?
One hundred percent, we found the fact. If you give the ATV people a place to go legally, it resolves so many of the other problems. Because as Rich said, they are not afraid of being caught in their hustling and doing improv. As long as it's well regulated, we have found people that used to go excessive speed, now are slowing down and they're waiting in gentlemen like this that are out walking. It's more of a community feeling than an us versus them.
Sean, your hands up.
Yes, Sean Hadley. Uh, as a member of the club and a taxpayer and also a candidate for select, I do support the club. I think this town needs economic development. Downtown needs revival. We need an additional revenue. I don't want to see our building go up or our services cut because we're not considering things like this. This is a well thought out plan. These guys did their homework. They talked to everybody. I've talked to people downtown. They want to see Walpole track. The Walpole track that comes in, other business owners may want to rent some of those buildings downtown. They want to revive the burned out west track. They need, people need to see that our town is growing. Right now all they see is a lot of empty buildings. They don't want to see that. This is just one part of many things that we can do with our town, but it's, it's a big component of generating economic revenue. I think for businesses need support from you guys. They want to see you guys support more, more revenue, more, more, more traffic. I mean, this is, this, we've got to consider this because our town needs, needs, we, we need a revival of something. We need to get, get the travel.
Other comments?
Hi, Carrie Glover with the Staticless Chamber. Um, I'm here for myself and for the chamber. Uh, I have a letter that Denise Fazelli wrote. Um, she's the executive director.
We've received that.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to read it for everybody. Okay, so this is her words and take that in mind. I collect them. I'm writing today in full support of Dover Rover's ATV club. Road access and parking ride request. The club's plan could allow limited ATV access on certain roads in the Dover, uh Foxcroft, creating uh greater connectivity through town and positioning Dover Foxcroft as a core destination rather than a pass through town. As a chamber director, I communicate often with other chambers throughout the nation and recognize the millions of dollars in revenue other states bring in because of the seamless connectivity they have, they offer with ATVers. The state of Maine alone brings in seven hundred and fifty million in tourism revenue specific to ATV enthusiasts. But our region sees an insignificant portion of those dollars because we have not invested in connectivity, signage and maintenance to the degree that our regions in Maine, uh, sorry, other regions in Maine and other parts of the panel. This revenue impacts our lodging facilities, retail businesses, convenience stores and more. Ultimately, connectivity exposes our region to families that may one day decide to live here. The result, um, the resulting business growth would be a benefit to all. I understand the club's request also includes possibility of a trading gate. I understand the club's request also includes possibility of the trade-in gate free of the fairgrounds as an official designated parking ride area. Providing riders a place in our town to safely park, unload, and explore all central main trails accessible from Dover Foxcroft. Again, this would position Dover Foxcroft as a destination where ATV travelers would start and end their searches. I had the privilege of listening to the club's entire presentation and was impressed by the forethought and organization of their plan. They've taken, uh, potential safety and noise concerns into consideration, addressing them with a plan for corporate signage. Curfews and rules as determined by the Dover Foxcroft Police Department. I also appreciate their willingness to cover the cost of bringing the plan to fruition. For all of these reasons, we have agreed to offer our support to the Dover Rover's ATV Club. Throughout this process and urge you to consider the positive impact and inflammation. Of their plan would have on our town and our region, thank you in advance for your consideration. And just on a side note, as the visitor center supervisor, I have many people coming in to speak with me. Asking what there is to do in the area, and it's, sometimes I just, I don't know what to say. Because there's not a lot to do in Dover, um, and they're wanting maps for trails. Whether it's snowmobile, ATV, um, so it's, it's, it's growing more and more. For me on a daily basis, having to say, oh, there's not a lot of access here, you're gonna have to go to Milo. You're gonna have to go past Guilford and everything like that, and it's, it's disheartening for them and for us. Because as the chamber, of course, all we want is for our businesses to thrive. And for the towns in our area to grow. Thank you.
Fisher?
Um, it's Andy Torben, I'm the technical commissioner of A two and, uh, Matt Anderson. We just wanted to, I don't think I'm gonna read all this, 'cause it's basically, I know everything people have been saying. But you know, we, we've allowed access on the UT, on the UT roads and have been pleasantly. Surprised at the, at the lack of complaints and they've done quite well there. And, uh, I just think I'm really impressed with, uh, the presentation. And I think it's just a, it's a revenue driver for this area and community. And, uh, we have seen a great success in Newport, but also in Greenville too, I, I just would encourage this, look forward to. To include this.
Other comments? Yes?
One thing I'd like to add is, one, the police chief and also as resident of Culberry. Um, I want, I think it's really important for people to know, this was not something that just came up within the last month. Um, Alex reached out to me over a year ago and presented a plan. And we met many times going over different options of routes, um, concerns that we thought might come up. And Alex and the ATV club have been extremely willing to alter their original plan to make things work. So I just, I think it's really important to know that this isn't something that they just came up with within the last several months. This is something that they've been working on for well over a year, um, and trying to put together this plan so that it. Beats what they're trying to accomplish, but also has this minimum impact on the community that these trails are going through. Um, and I, I would like to vet them because I think they've really done a good job, they've been very receptive to our concerns. And trying to address them to a point where it minimizes that impact, and I think that's important too. That for you guys as followers.
Yeah, thank you too. Other comments? Um.
Hi, Amanda Stewart, um, part of the presentation, um, even Tom, the select board mailed out a hundred and fifty letters to people. That would be affected by this, but I think that could also be a really positive impact for a hundred and fifty people that could have ATVs now. That don't have to necessarily put their ATVs on trailers, bring them to Newport, bring them to, up to Irving so they can ride their ATVs. It's a hundred and fifty people that can ride from the front doors by adding this road access in as well.
A couple people, yeah, right behind you, sorry, I'll get to that.
Derek dancing, I own a property, that's his name and first road, next street. Great idea to bring the ATV town. We go anywhere else and any other town that has ATVs, if you don't have an ATV road or access to it. And use this another day down Main Street there, and that's how it should be here as well, and, and it will bring a lot of business.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Your next sir?
My name's Andy Bauer, I live on Winter Street, have for thirty-five years. And, um, you know, we've seen it right from the beginning with ATV in, in this town. You know, as being members of clubs, you know, we police it to, you know, the trash and carry in, carry out, carry out other people's stuff. And, uh, you know, we've been all over the state, Jackman, Millinocket, Greenville, and it all, it works. And them communities, it works, you can just get your cash, your food, give them, give them your money, yes, it's a win-win. That's my opinion.
Others? Yes?
Um, I have Pete Dennis, yeah, I'm sorry, I have one more appointment earlier. Uh, there's been talk of trying to bring, uh, a hotel into town, try to report the other, uh, buildings we have. Um, my wife and I contributed to the Fuel House, we're big supporters of that. Um, the gentleman over here with, uh, uh, the bed breakfast seemed concerned about doctors and. Be infected by the sound, but I know plenty of doctors and nurses that have side by sides, and I would look at it sure as an opportunity. To fill your, um, bed breakfast, you know, the whole summer, and I would love to show the town. With this opportunity that maybe we could encourage an investor to come in, put a hotel in the town, so that we could have bigger events. At the Fuel House and Ice Ring, we've put a lot of money into, uh, just another consideration.
Thank you. There's another person.
We've lost it because it was too much. Uh, already, we got, you got bikes, you got, I'm not really complaining that much about it, um. I moved to Dover, I pulled it up online and said. The most boring place. I wanted that, I, I loved to fish, hunt, that's what I wanted. I go to Gorm, I have the shit show. Um, I just, I don't know, that's all I got to say.
Just adjust, if we could not adjust each other and adjust comments through the chair, that's how this works. You have, you have questions, sorry, right?
Yeah, uh, my name's Justin Walton, um, I live on Dwelly, right at the intersection of Paul Street. And I'm completely for the routes that you guys are chosen, um. My only issue with this is there's a little unofficial access road that cuts. All this out of the picture and then goes, it's a straight shot in Paul Street. And my, my lawn is right there, I got two small boys, a six-year-old and a two-year-old. That little white flip on there is one giant rock that they're constantly out there drawing with chalk and playing with their hot wheels and stuff like that. And I can pull up my ring footage of Monday alone, not just the weekend, it's a half a dozen people. Coming up through that excess, completely bypassing that whole, that whole route. And it's not just holidays, it's year-round, it's snowmobilers. Like I, like I said, I'm, I'm a hunter, I fish, I have snowmobiles, you know, I'm all for it. It's just, I can police my own vehicles, my own machines, I can't police other people doing that. And that's my only concern, my wife's family has lived in that area of Dover for years. Like they got horses there, they're constantly in and out taking care of the animals, um. It's, that's my only concern that.
You wanna discuss that?
Yeah, um, I, off, or challenge anybody that has a concern right now, even before this road active. Ashley's done an amazing job with the computer as far as putting our name out there as a club, um, Facebook if you have it. Just reach out to somebody in the club and we'll do everything we can to alleviate and reduce the problems.
And absolutely, even if this doesn't happen, we will put signage there, you didn't know that that was there or the, the trail.
There, there, it's right by the old Bond Brothers and it's like a little unofficial access, um, we.
This man in the pink shirt behind you, he'll certainly sign it for you.
Yeah, like, and there, I, I wanna say that there are people who have been respectful, they've seen my children out there. But there are people who just fly right by, you know, they'll fly up, they'll, they'll stop at the main road. And then they'll fly down Paul Street. Cause they don't wanna get caught, and like I said, I don't have to do that, you know. I can't say that I haven't taken my snowmobile onto this trail from that little access, like she was mentioning earlier. It's, it's their property, you know, I'm all for people doing this and bringing re- revenue into the town. I just, I don't want to see one of my sons get hit by a door by four or a snowmobile or whatever.
Certainly wanna regret that regardless of this, so he will.
Thank you, is there a comment back from?
Uh, yeah, my name is Christopher, I'm from, uh. Kind of alluding back to what Darren was talking about, about not many opportunities or many things that the town presents. I think that's a little bit of a misstatement, not on his part, but it's an ideal that kind of is. Become Dover, there's not a lot that the town offers, I think there is a lot that the town offers. I think that there's not accessibility, uh, for those opportunities we presented to people from away. People from here know about businesses within the town, um, they just don't have access to get there. At all times with all vehicles, um, we have things like motorcycles, lab vehicles. Um, that are not limited to their access to the businesses within Dover. I don't think limiting four-wheeler or ATV access would mitigate any of the problems. That people would have with noise complaints or, you know, unruly riders. Because those are certainly concerning, but I think everyone, including the club and the community would have. But there are plenty of other instances where we have those difficulties to deal with. Um, it's just a matter of coming together as a community to deal with. It's not limiting accessibility for certain people or certain activities. For being able to understand what Dover actually does have to offer to not just our community. But communities beyond and people from, that are not normal. I guess I. Just can't, you can't, I understand everybody that that's not trying to combat anything, that anybody has brought up for concerns from this. I just feel like, like say with the, with the community policing grants and things like that. You're looking at things in the future, probably something like a side-by-side or an ATV that the police department would have access to. That they don't now, so if these access roads are open or anything like that. It would provide the police department with more opportunities to curb unruly behavior. People that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing, whereas right now they're limited to. The only vehicles that they have are vehicles that are on the road, so if somebody was to say be on a road illegally, dip off on the trail. The police department can't follow, whereas in the future, if something like this was to exist. The police department would have access to resources that would allow them to police better for these activities. And. Not granting access to things like ATVs, we have snowmobilers that come through here all winter long. There's no availability necessarily to police those, they can be loud, they can go fast. Um, so there's not any limitations on those people to be able to come to town. And access different businesses within the community. Saying that ATV years can't be on the same level as them because we may run into issues in the future. I think is really detrimental to the town because we're cutting off the conversation. Instead of furthering the conversation to say, how can this work for everybody, instead of just saying, it doesn't work right now, it can't work in the future. Just because we have concerns doesn't mean that we can't be addressed from the work going forward.
Exactly why we're having this public area. Um, we're taking over our test domain, I'd like to wrap it up, it's possible, yes, ma'am?
I'm Lloyd Blauffer, I live on Paul Street, I own the property at the end of the street. Um, my concern is, is that the ambulance service is on dwell. The ambulance service uses Dwelly to Paul Street to get to anything in Guilford. We already have a very high number of vehicles that are traveling. Forest, on Park Street, Forest Street, Dwelly, they go to the end, they go down Sanford. They're going down Sanford now to get on the, on fifteen on Guil, on the West Main. Because they can't get on from the end of Paul Street, you can't get on West Main. Very busy intersection right there, um, my concern is, is, is the safety of the four-wheelers. The side-by-side because of, I mean, that ambulance, he's gonna go. He's not gonna run his siren, he's only got a bike, because he can't hit the siren until he gets to the end of the street. On the end of Paul Street, on the Main Street, so that to me is a concern. On top of that we've already got ninety-five going through there already, so that everybody can get on to the other side instead of going on Main Road.
You could certainly put a sign that says caution, emergency services, have the right of way. Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, that stretch is hard to use, they do lose. For anything towards Guilford, they go to the other end of dwell if they go.
When, when we had our meeting with the chamber, um, and I think Steph started talking about this. Um, we considered making maps for in-town routes specifically. And pushing them out, social media and everything, but also paper maps where it would list the rules on every road. And the specific routes on every, every access route, so at least the information would be available for people. Know the, the in-lives of their, our in-lives.
Anyone else who knows, on a, just sir?
Uh, Ryan Race, a business owner and, uh, homeowner here in the community. Uh, I just wanted to touch on one thing that keeps getting brought up, and we've talked about the economic growth and all that good stuff, um. Mr. Daggett is here tonight representing, uh, Abbott and their whole team, and, uh, I just wanna say that. Um, I own a, I have a camp with a large tract of land in Abbott where the trail crosses. And about ten years ago, he approached me, um, looking for some access points, I told him absolutely not. Um, for the exact reason that everybody is bringing up here this evening. Fast forward about three years ago, he approached me again, we had a great conversation and said, look, let me help police this. Our members police it, our, I will help, I will make sure that this is going to be a which that for our community. Um, I was very, very concerned and let him know my concerns personally about doing that. Um, we're on a third, going into our third summer doing this, um, I have no complaints. Um, I will say what everyone has touched on tonight is by self-policing and also making things legal. So that people are not doing illegal activities in order to get across to point A or point B, that makes a huge difference. And I will see, I, I've seen for myself that those problems have cut down. Um, at the time, I didn't know Mr. Daggett very, very well, um, we definitely know each other very well now. I've known Alex for a really, really long time, um, I most certainly support this, it's good for our businesses and stuff. But more or less, um, I think by self-policing and allowing these people, um, you know, to come into our community and spend some money. Those are all added benefits, I think for the amount, um, of usage that we give other big businesses in town such as Pleasant River and others. You know, when the Jake break goes off at four forty in the morning, um, listen, everyone has to make a living. And I want them to do well and succeed, you know, why can't we add ATVs to it? Thank you.
Other comments? Well, thank you, I think we've heard from, uh, you got, you have an app right now, our, our comment, we're just saying, don't say. Well, thank you. I think we first from uh, you got, you have an app right now. Our, our Tom Parker said, don't say it was a. Be that like four or five days ago. Yes.
Just one thing, I just, can I just see how many people here are in actual support of this?
So we'll, we'll uh, like to hear from the select board members also right now after Republicans had its yes talk and. Uh, they might have some questions, uh, including both that technology brought forward so far. So. So what your?
I'll go last again. Having sat through this presentation now twice. Um, it takes me back to about two years ago when I was probably on the select board for about nine days. And Alex approached me and said, how do I feel about uh, bringing ATV traffic into town? And I said, uh, yeah, uh, well, I have, um, but then I said. Uh, bring us some info. Bring us a plan, bring us some examples. And two years later, here we are with all of those. I don't think we can dispute the presentation. We can't dispute the economic development that would come out of it. Um. We can ask questions about safety. Uh, we can ask questions about licensed riders. People from other towns are saying kids and. And people with OUIs that drive their four wheelers in town and like, well, from what I hear, you have to be a licensed driver. And we are not on every street at the moment. We are designated roads. So, you know, I just think that the plan is pretty well. Just been thought of completely. Uh, there are some other things though, be- before they're asking questions of tonight. The East Main Street and River Street still seems a little up in the air, so I don't. Know how quickly we move without some answers there and uh. And Lori Blockler, I totally agree. I said at one of the presentations, and I do live on West Main Street. But the biggest employer in the town of Dover's main parking lot is on Dwelly. And the ambulance service is there as well. And I just, you know, there are times nurses and doctors who try to get to work a bit quick. Cause they're running late and the combination may not be perfect. So we need education. And West Main Street's bad enough as it is. So the traffic's on it for crossing the road, all those little things. That I think we're already touching on and whatever. So I. You know, I can't see how we can't move forward. I just, there are still questions.
So we had talked about potential of a camera on the back of the police station for River Street.
Yeah.
We certainly could put a camera near the, the mess as well.
It's probably further up near the telephone company where, you know, they come out of the, the office, their depot and. Along Dwelly turn down Paul and you're correct, the, the siren goes on when they hit West Main, but. It is still a big traffic area.
Is there a reason why the siren goes off? There's because it's the neighborhood.
I would say it's the neighborhood, so they try not to use the siren. Till they're on West Main and then they go just about the time they get up.
They're not allowed?
I have no idea.
If there was somebody in the light.
I don't know. If they had people on the road, I'm sure they would touch.
Yeah.
So from a legal standpoint, they're supposed to be running their siren.
Yeah.
At the time?
If their lights are on, they're supposed to be running.
So they're doing it as a favor to.
Sure, sure. So if someone was not noticing the lights on like.
Yeah.
And so I don't have any. Other thoughts on select board now?
Steve. All right. Um, well, I, as, as somebody who has followed this for. Few decades, by my opinion has also was this gentleman spoke to us has changed over time. I remember the days when the proportion of yahoos to law abiding ATV riders was pretty poor. Uh, you go out in the woods and you see them tearing up and down stream beds. Hooting and hollering, tossing their trash and. I, I know those people still exist, but now they're disproportionately small percentage. Um, I think most of them got killed off with the trikes. Um, so. The dumbest things anybody ever invented. If anybody here will use it, I apologize. Like you just look at that thing and say, how did anybody survive? Also back in the day before trails were really well established. Um, and. There was a reason why it made it illegal. So uh, my, my opinion has changed. Uh, I've seen. The uh, responsible opening of roads in especially in Greenville, which I'm most familiar with. Um. And at first there was a lot of angst about what that was gonna do because they, they drive all of them down Pritham, which is the, the major thoroughfare. And I gotta say, it's, it has not been an issue. Um, I live off of Foxcroft Center Road, which is currently our only. Uh, public way which allows the EDX, well, Plum Abbot Road is that one that book. And um, it's, it's not been an issue. Um, I even. Have been very complimentary uh, to John going out there and getting the mud off the road, which inevitably happens after what? Two weeks of rain. Um, and so I, I know that. I, I have faith in the club. Uh, they've shown a track record of, of living up to their word. So. So great presentation, definitely.
Want to hear a change?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to thank you again for your work. It's been remarkable and well done. Um. And I'm probably the only person who's gonna share what I'm going to be doing, which I know is a minority opinion. Um, we also got a, got a letter from Dr. Ferno who lives on River Street. And a letter from some people who live on Pleasant Street that are not in favor of this. Um, and I, I think I'll just share a little bit of Dr. Ferno's uh, letter, which is clearly lengthy. Um, some of what she said are some of my concerns. Um. We should be encouraged, this is Dr. Ferno's third paragraph, we should be encouraging increased pedestrian and bike pathways. That are safe and enjoyable, not encouraging more motorized, noisy fossil fuel burning vehicles on our road and through town. Um. So I guess just to um, share a little bit more about where I'm coming from is in line with. What Dr. Ferno shares. Um, we're all aware of. Our climate issues. We have a climate action committee on behalf of the town. Um, we should be working to decrease the use of fossil fuels, not promoting recreation that uses fossil fuels. So. I'm really opposed to promoting more ATVs, more snowmobiles. Um, I don't think we're talking about the future of our children when we do that. Our planet is warming every year, as you all know. Um, so that's one of my primary concerns. Um, I understand I'm swimming against the tide, but I need to be honest about how I, how I feel. Um, I'm a member of the Congregational Church where we are working really hard. To become a carbon neutral entity. And we've installed solar panels and we're working on a community garden and we're working to. Stop using oil um, as a source of heat. I'm really. Dedicated to that work. So I find um, the promotion of more and more burning of fossil fuels really reprehensible. Um, I'm also really concerned about the residential streets. I know in Greenville, it's mostly clear to math and. I've talked to my boy there. Um. I think it's different if you live on River Street and your yard is basically right against the street and. I said this when you guys presented just our committee, but imagining myself sitting out there on one of those hunting about River Street with. Grandkids in a little splash pool and. You know, the yard is right next to the street. I don't think River Street is a good place for this. If we do it. In any of these other places, I think that's a problem. Um. And like many have said, I'm, I'm concerned about what's made. Every time I go to mountains, which is a lot because I really like chicken tenders and I buy here. Um. You know, it's not easy to get in and out of there now. So thinking about ATVs crossing and coming into mountains. Um, just adds to that volume of traffic. So that, that worries me. Um. I can see that the momentum for this has been the other direction and I respect that. I would ask if we move forward on this um, at our next board meeting. That we think about. Um, perhaps testing a couple of these trails. And then um, checking in with each other at the end of the season and see how, how it went. Maybe it'll be great. Maybe people will love it and we'll decide to. Add on to that, but I. I really think it's important for us to have, um, I appreciate one of the speakers from. Another community, I think it was you from Abbott, talking about having contracts that have to be removed. So I think that would be an appointment on. Something for us to build into this is that. We're taking care of problems that they arise and that we're um. Responding. Um, so that needs, so. I think um, I have concerns for speed, for enforcement. I know I hear from people all the time. Who feel like we don't enforce car speed limits now and we don't know how. We're gonna ask the police to do more enforcement with more vehicles on our. Um, so for me, I guess it's, it's the fossil fuel issue, it's safety. And it's sort of a quality of life for some of those residents. Especially River Street. Yeah, people don't have like long front yards. You know, ATVs, which could be a lot on weekends in the summer. Uh, would really change your experience of putting a few burgers and sitting on your yard on a, on a weekend. What I have to share on.
Well, first of all, I'm not an ATV rider, but boy, have I learned a lot. I only have eight pages. Just kidding. Um, what I'm saying, Ashley and Alex has already, have already gotten copies, but um. It's my understanding that ATV riders want to be on the trails. It's the food, it's the gas and to spend money is what you're asking for. Also, I'm hearing there needs to be safety for our residents as well as a preservation of our neighbors. And neighborhoods. So we need to come up with a win-win. Uh, this is making a major change going from trailhead to trailhead versus uh. Cutting off resident streets and, and that sort of thing. This is not just for residents. This is for everyone. This is for our region. A private landowner can say, no, as that gentleman attested to. But what can residents say? Besides call, so. Um, if it's good for one street, why don't we do the whole town?
Great, I agree.
Um, a- a- and so again, I'm, I'm kind of skipping around. You've given, and I'm on the protection committee with a couple of uh, with Joel and, and Tracy. So you've given us some work to do and unfortunately this has not come to the protection committee. All of us have seen the presentation, but as a committee, we have, we have work to do. For example, what are we gonna do? With the um, the ambulance? Let's find out more information. What are we gonna do regarding the stop sign on Lincoln Street? Can that be changed? Uh, let's have a conversation with the staffing that we have now. And we're being criticized for, okay, we have issues up on Park Street or Pine Street. Well, we have one officer on duty. And if they're over at West Main Street at the hospital trying to calm a patient. Sorry, but the Pine Street and the Park Street traveler needs to be put on hold. Um, again, I mean, I go back to thanking you for bringing this issue. I think it is part, only part. Of the town's economic discussion as well as a strategic plan, which we do not have. And had we had a plan fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, we would have been able to say, oh, we need to pull in ATV. We need to pull in this, we need to pull in that. Well, I feel, I failed in not having that type of strategic plan. Um, we need education and boy, did I get some. Like I said, I'm not an ATV rider. Um, but you know, what is allowed now? I didn't have a clue that you were able to go from Irving's to Subway. I don't have my yardstick saying, oh, my word, this, this person is off road. I didn't know that. So, so again, some of the things that we're seeing, it may be our lack of information. And it's a matter of call one eight hundred Ashley or whoever to say, help me understand this. Um, a- and again, how our current business is going to be impacted and who's gonna have a conversation with them? If Subway or, you know, Smith Store doesn't want to have ATVs. And they start posting, is that okay? And my sense is let's work with the club to say, hey, you got a problem? Let's, let's figure this out. Um, I also feel, and I put this as, here are the things we could try. Number one, we have a nice little food truck out of the trails.
Yeah.
Wonderful business for someone. Um, also, let's have a, let's have an outline of. Where we can compliment and where we can complain. Because in a year from now, we need to know if this is successful. And where we need to, where we need to make change. So I'll just end by saying, please let the protection committee and it's open to the public, come and see, watch, whatever. Um, to do our work. So that then we can come back, get our questions answered. A lot of it is safety related. And again, we've already had many conversations to say, okay, this is, these are the parts in place. And I'm sorry, but I've lived on River Street for thirty five years and I have concerns about River Street. But at the same time, this is, like I said, if you are not an ATV rider, it's my job to say, help me understand. And if I am an ATV rider, help me understand what your concerns are. And so having communication and conversations. And actually I asked, you know, Ashley and Alex, could you guys just? Maybe have a couple of informational meetings so people can come and vent and or, you know, figure this out. I know a public hearing, this has been labeled as, and it's kind of a formal way, but you know, let's go down to Pats or wherever to have, and let's talk this out. Cause again, it's, it's our community and you know, I think like the gentleman in the back, I like boring. And I like the, what was the name of the forest out there? Enchanted Forest. That was the best secret we had. And we didn't want to tell anyone, right folks? So anyway, I'll stop.
Jesse, you have comments?
Can you hear me okay? Can you guys hear me?
You can't hear us.
I can hear you now, yes. Are you hearing me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I've seen this presentation probably three or four times. And I would agree with Jane, there are a lot of questions that still need to be asked. But I feel we need to look at this opportunity and. Give it fair and due process to try to move some part of it forward. Um, they've done a lot of work. They've worked with the uh, the police department and a few other entities. They've got some, some real good support in that room right now with them. And I just think that we ought to take a good look at this as a protection committee and let's see what we can do with it. That's my comments.
Thank you, Jesse. We heard you. You wanted to go on, I'll, I'll, I'll just want, I'll give you my piece on them. So. Um, I, I live on South Street. There's no noise of your feet. It's true. All the truck trucks are coming down that hill. So, but the noise doesn't bother me. Uh, my big concern was I, I'm dead set against having uh, ATV traffic go between Monument Square and Union Square, because it's already so congested and it's so conflicted. I was very happy to see that your proposal avoids that area that you also see the same problem there. Uh, we, I don't think there's any, any ways you can introduce ATV traffic to that. But I think the rest of your idea is, is well thought out. It would. Improve economic development in our. Improve economic development in our community. It's the odd situation we have with the Essex Street Bridge reconstruction coming up in in twenty twenty-six. That that thing is gonna be shut down for. Over a year, I'll say that. So I mean, you do have an alternate plan to get through the airport and the Pine Crest Park down Grove Street to. To reach that area there. So I don't think there's much value in opening up the route from. Fairview and Lincoln going across the bridge just for the few months before that construction starts. I think it would be odd to. Allow the traffic to go there and then immediately shut down. But I think I would wait till the bridge is done. That that route is opened up. I think that you could go around the alternate route that you proposed there through Grove Street. So. I'm generally in favor of a proposal based on economic development. I think ATVs have improved a lot in the last twenty years, simply because of the ATV clubs that many people pointed out. Do police themselves. And you know, anything is going to have a policing problem. There's always gonna be a few. Bad apples in the barrel. But you know, I think that there are strength in numbers and you know, having that focus on. Safe riding is the way to manage it. So I would be in favor, in general favor of your proposal. Question, we don't have it on the agenda to act on that tonight because. We want to hear all the comments first. We want to make sure that that we don't make a decision that's hasty. We want to. Give more thought to some of the variables that have been brought up. I would like to put this on the agenda for our next meeting, which is only twelve days from now on June ninth. To have an actual next step, take a vote on what our next step is. And that's my thought on that.
Just wondering if the protection committee would have time to meet in between, like us. We're meeting Wednesday at four o'clock.
So give us some thoughts on the policing aspect. This originally came to the Promotion and Development Committee of the Select Board because. Of the economic development value of it. But obviously, you can't just, you know, pigeonhole it into one. Part because it's it's an all encompassing change to the the community that involves economic development and a lot of other things too. So I think. If we have the Protection Committee meet next week and then we have our Select Board meeting on June ninth. We can get a better sense of, well, you know, what action the board wants to take. I know that summer's starting. And we don't want to drag this process out. Government's very good at talking about things without actually pulling the trigger on. So. I don't see any need to belabor the process, but I I do think it would be a little bit hasty for us to take an actual action tonight.
If we, if if it went forward as what you were saying, not opening Essex Creek Bridge route. Does that mean that we would have to come back at a later time and ask for that again? Or is it something that we could like, if we approved it now and could use it all summer? Then we could certainly clearly put signs. Walking, you know, bridge out. Obviously, you can't go that way. So if we gain access to a parking ride at Gate Street, which is right there, you know, I think that. Using the bridge for this one summer.
Number one, if you use the bridge just for one summer, it's kind of a trial basis. The other way of looking at it is that, you know, once people get used to something and then you take away, three months later, there's some dissatisfaction for that. But I think that's worth further discussion. I'm not not totally opposed to that, but you know.
How it would work if we had to come back and ask again, just to open up that section later?
I think that would might be, I think by that time we'd have, you know, you know, actual data of what. I don't think there's gonna be anywhere near as many problems or something like that.
I'm a guide and I live here and apparently I'm on the Select Board. And I, since I moved back, have been talking with you guys. If everyone sees this, I have done tours around the state in snowmobiles and ATVs. And I've seen towns go and do things like this with much smaller plans than what you've developed and they've been successful. So I am. Hundred percent certain that Dover can do this and be a benchmark for others. And. There are always gonna be people that find reasons to say no, and a lot of the time it's personal, it's not factual. And I get that. Emotions run deep in small communities. I have some facts I want to share to put some people at rest here. So. A lot of the time when you see increase in these communities, whether it's snowmobiles or ATVs, you would assume. That that means more problems come with more people and that is incorrect. You can talk to any of the wardens, anyone that's out there doing this, and they'll say, what you actually find is. That number, the people that might be causing problems, doesn't change much, because a lot of time it's the same people causing those problems. The policing is what deals with that. Giving them places to go out and if they're having a rough week, go and put their energy somewhere. As has been said, open things up more so they're not doing something illegal. Allegiance, a large part of this. You have a guiding community. I was in it when I was doing this for money, non-profit. And I was very frustrated. I couldn't get to Dover to bring people here. It was it was just a lot of work and I had to go into Greenville most time. I had a great time. There's an opportunity in our communities, but they bring people here, they will police, they will report things, they will educate people. They won't just see someone doing something stupid and go, I'm gonna take a photo and move on. I promise you, a professional guide, and most people will say, you. The bridge isn't there anymore because they're fixing it. Take your free waders, don't jump that. There'll be a conversation, right? So. For people that live on the roads where there may be a change, are there gonna be some bumps to the road? Absolutely. You have to put your faith in our community who's gonna do the right thing. Our police chief is right there. He's actually covered in Superman, if you didn't know that. He's everywhere all the time. But the other thing that goes into that is even if they're not there, as we do this, we get more support. From the state, believe it or not, you can call and say, hey, we're expecting a bunch of people to speak down. And wards will happily show up and set up out there and they will not only check your speed to make sure you're safe, but they'll say, can I see your registration? They will make sure that everything is safe because the more we do as a community, the less work they have to do. They can focus on the bigger stuff. There's a whole system in place in the state and we are lucky to live here. We're blessed to be a outdoor recreational hub, which. We are trying to get grant money from the feds to make us a recreational destination. We're a semifinalist, are we not? Imagine that. And they were part of that conversation. Even the feds see, this is a big boom for communities. And yes, we're gonna have some times where we have tough conversations out. Maybe we can't use a certain road anymore. It'll happen. When it comes to noise, we've talked that most machines nowadays are relatively quiet. Pollution. Well, a normal run-of-the-mill ATV is about seven thousand to nine thousand dollars. An electric version is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Let's be realistic about what's actually affordable to our community and the people that live here. A typical ATV can go about a hundred miles on a tank, all depending on how you're driving it and the terrain, okay? An EV is about forty-five to eighty miles. Okay? On top of that, five minutes at the gas station, you've fueled up, you've gotten your beverages and your pork rinds, you're on your way to having a good day. EVs take six to twelve hours to charge. So there's pros and cons to the different technology that people want us to use and look into. Never mind the fact that if an EV lights on fire, it's horrible for our, well, everything around it for quite a long time. Production of batteries and recycling them. Recent study by MIT actually went over that and said, basically, we don't have the technology right now. To outweigh the cost. So combustion, believe it or not, is still the most economical way to go. And there's plenty of use. We will see businesses start coming here. We'll see communities in our community start to pop up. Show of hands, how many people have an Airbnb or rental property in this community? A number of you, right? Okay? How many of you have had people from out of state ask them to drop their gear off and rent your place year round? No questions asked. Yeah. Everywhere else that has access. People from out of state, they don't want to lug their gear every weekend up here. They look for a place that's safe. And they'll say, how much all year round? And I know I can show up, take my stuff, get on the trail, come back, drop it off and be good to go. Here's your money. Indirect and direct benefits to this, okay? I think that the design we have is great. I caution on trying to tweak the design too much because those that haven't done this type of stuff. May miss out on bottlenecking. And that's where we start getting traffic. If we make too many changes, you get too much congestion. You have to think about traffic and flow for safety reasons. I think their plan is solid the way it is. Yes, we're gonna lose the bridge. That's gonna happen. We do need a new one. I think that if we have people that say someone is making their own trail, cut from my property. I know they're gonna go out there and take care of it. I know that other groups want to do it. I will tell you, if they are having a hard time, call me. I have helped many times. I'll bring my cell cameras that go to my phone. I will set things up. I will assist every entity in making sure the people that are not following. The rules get educated. That is my commitment to making sure this works. I have plenty of guide friends that will do the same, because we believe in this. It's good for us and our grandkids and anybody else that wants to be involved. It's a helping thing to do. So I think that. I hope the board will agree to do a five-year probationary plan. That the Protection Committee meets twice a year, so preseason, postseason, to go over all the pros and cons, anything that pops up in the meantime. Once we lay out our plan. And after the five years, we'll see if anything has to be changed. But this is gonna put. Our club really in a corner for a while, because this is the test period of not only getting it set up. Losing one of the trails and reroute into another one and then coming back around. And I can't think of a better test to make sure they want it and our community wants it than to do that for them. Because if they can't do that, then all the changes coming down the pipe we even know about, it's not much of a conversation, is it? So I support it and I want to see it happen. If anybody has any questions, reach out to me.
All the board members have had their say. Any other things to ask before we move on off the public? All right, I declare the public hearing closed. We have an open session for the public, but you can ask any questions or make comments about any topics not related to ATV trail.
Before everybody leaves, I'm Amanda with the Pathetic Theory Community Center. My first thing I'd like to share is that our juice bar is officially open. Vitality Blend, so it's inside the pack. It is open to the public. It's all fresh pressed juices and. Smoothies that are all fresh made, as well as different toasts you can get up there. So not up and running. Without a little bit of a setback at the pool again, but we did have an engineer coming.
If we could cut the talking down while this lady's trying to.
We did have an engineer come in and he's working with us. So we learned, we thought that the concrete might be bad in the pool. It is not. So that's a positive that we learned from that. The negative that we learned from it is that we really need to take the paint all the way down to the concrete. Because the paint that we have gotten to is not stable enough to hold paint. So if anyone works for Sunbelt or United and has connection with rental equipment, that's what we're looking for right now. He's also working on getting that for us, but right now, most of the equipment that he owns and like Gordon owns. Obviously are out on really big projects on bridges and roads and big construction stuff. So if anyone has rental connections, we are looking. Looking to get a big a big standard. He thinks he has one that might be available to us. It's like fourteen hundred pounds. So we'll need help to get it in the pool. Once we get it. But we're getting there with that. Our memberships have almost doubled since two months ago. So we're about halfway where we need to be for the end of the year. And we are quickly running out of the savings that we earned at the beginning, like while we were closed down. So all the donations and stuff we got. So really relying heavily on bringing in a banner program and some really heavy fundraising in the couple of months coming up. But I think we're feeling pretty good about it, pretty confident. We have a meeting on Friday with Jason Broschu and Dan Stanky and Frank Suzuko to kind of. Tie that all in and finish up our sponsorship packet. So those will be going out. I did have one question for the board, and I guess it was a misunderstanding on my part. We have a collaborative poker run coming up on June twenty-first. I initially kind of asked the board, like, I think the Legion Hall had to get a gambling permit. And I said, you know, do I need to get that? Do I need to do that? My understanding was that if it's a one-off and it's not like a whole bunch of cash going out, I did not. We've had concerns that we do need to get a gambling permit with the commission, but I just want to make sure that we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing is both organizations. And we're just kind of getting mixed answers in a lot of places.
You're looking at people that don't know.
Sometimes you have. Partner organization can get for you. And you're providing the venue, but you have partners that are helping put on the gap.
Yeah, we're kind of, it's a collaborative. So it's really, we're just kind of parking and then working with the Dover.
Not the code, but when I worked at the Y and we were doing things like that, you did have to get them on the stage.
Okay, okay, we did have to do that.
There is, I spoke with somebody today from MAC in Maine ATV Coalition. A lot of clubs are doing a Joker Run where where it's not betting. It's still similar, but it's. You don't have to. So I'll speak a bit about that.
Doesn't qualify as a game of.
Like no matter what you. Right now, we're having the like, is it childcare? Is it summer camp? Or is it a program conversation with, because it's all three different. Like form of licensing and insurances. So. And I think it's kind of the same thing, like, is it gambling or is it a fundraiser? I don't know the answer to that either, because it's a fundraiser for the organizations, but.
Oh, sorry. Denise actually had a conversation with somebody from the state. Just within the last couple of weeks, there was something that we were considering doing. And we were told that we had to have. The license. And so if you want to talk to her about it, she's got. She's got the lowdown for you.
All right. Just want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're all trying to do it, right? We're winning. And so Vitality Blend, so that's a, it's a community store. Our very first week, we brought in, we sold ninety-nine items and we brought in almost eight hundred dollars in in a net gross, yeah, net revenue. Without having to sign out for yet, so still waiting for that to show up. So.
Other comments in the public? On non ATV stuff?
I talked with Alex and his wife about this. You know, if we can't do a regular parade, then maybe we should next year for the two hundred and fifty anniversary, have a big. You know, ATV parade. Get hundreds of machines in here one day in one town. Have them come in, spend a lot of money, have vendors on the route somewhere, have those food trucks. You know, make it about freedom, make it about, you know, ATVs and then come into Dover and spend that that freedom and that money in our town. We need to make a big event like that. I think having a big ATV parade like that has people deck their machines up. Spend twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars on machines. I know I did, all in my car. But we should have people come in there, spend a lot of money in our town and celebrate Dover Foxcroft on the two hundred and fifty anniversary of our country. That would be great. I think we should do that.
So the Whoopee Pie Festival is coming up. Right? And where it's gonna be at Fairgrounds, we have Ashley and Alex. They are going to be regulating that area where people are gonna be able to park their ATVs. We didn't have that before. So that's, the Whoopee Pie Festival is, I mean, much, who knows how much it might grow. Just being able to have, you know, have that fun ride, come in, spend the day with their family. And then, you know, continue on there. You know, have that fun ride, come in, spend the day with their family and then, you know, continue on there. It's gonna be great to be able to have them there and have that.
Other comments or questions? We do have a second public comment theory later on, but I really want to compliment on everyone who came here tonight. This this question we've talked about with ATVs is a major change for our community. But we're able to have a civil discussion about that. There was no negativity whatsoever. And I think that says a lot about how we live. And I like it, where we can treat each other with kindness and, you know. That's in short supply in many places. So we finished the open session for the public, open session for the Select Board on non ATV matters.
Wanted to really thank everybody for the Memorial Day Parade, which, you know, it's just the. Morning in Dover Foxcroft and. It always feels that way to me. And this year, it's no different. We had. Great participation, the Foxcroft Academy Band sounded wonderful. Of course, it was a beautiful day. And that doesn't hurt, but just a lovely event and I appreciate everybody that helped with that.
Our old town members have remarked that if they wanted to.
Yeah, it was a great morning. So if I think of my other item, I'll let you know.
Others? Jane?
I'm sorry.
There is all in England.
No, just, just road crews doing a good job despite the fact that it's going to rain every weekend for the, uh, sustainable future apparently.
Weekend row.
Um, seems like they, they grade my road and then it rains the next day. And I'm like, I got one day where it wasn't quite that. Uh, please be patient with the work in town, whether it's paving or then working on things and, uh. Please don't feel the need to get out of your vehicle and yell at people doing their job. No one appreciates that.
Sister.
You brought up the child.
Alright, that's why I bring that.
So, and again, I'll see the contest to it. Um, when they graded Norton Hill, I don't know what they did, but they did something very different. Which totally improved the road. So I shared that with her and I said, whatever Jeff did. And it rained, it rained. Usually it's, you know, you get this after and it's stood up. So thanks very much.
Tracy, anything that you want to add?
No, I think I'm okay at the moment.
Okay, alright, thank you. Anybody else? I'll close. We'll remark the select board then. So in terms of adjustments to the agenda, um. The consensus I feel is that we'll put, we'll put the decision on the ATV roof proposals on our June ninth meeting. Under, uh, new business for action. That way we can have a thorough discussion amongst ourselves at that time in public presence. But, uh, it looks good, I would say, for you.
And the parking ride too.
Yeah, the parking ride, I, I haven't heard anyone, uh, say anything negative about that. That makes a lot of sense. Uh, it's, it's right there. I mean, uh, having that. That area right on the ATV trail, it's almost, uh. Not to do it, right? Okay, so, but I, I think that, I think the, uh, but your basic roof proposal. With perhaps minor, uh, modification. Largely related to the bridge, uh, the construction part. Uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. That's, that's all I have. We thank you for the, the work you put in and, and obviously it's impressive to marshal the support with actually attending the meeting. Plus, uh, earlier you, you presented, uh, us with a petition signed by, uh, fifty-six citizens and thirty-seven businesses all in favor of this too. So there is support for this and, uh, I think we have nothing to fear, uh, and, and we can make that work and build a boss room. Okay, um, no committee reports. Uh, we do have unfinished business and it's three times a, uh, one thirty Grove Street. Uh, were you able to get them in there and find anything about conditions?
You're not.
Okay, I must say, I wish I said, could we say I'm shocked right now.
I know, we've had no, no contact whatsoever. And I got here at six o'clock, went in, I had no message. I listened to all Brian's messages just to make sure. That it didn't come in at the last minute. Um, I provided you with photos, ten photos, five are stapled together. Those are the five photos I took July fifth last year when I got the first complaint. The other five photos that are not stapled are photos that I took today to show you.
There's not much change.
There, there is not much change. The yard has been raked and the, um, brushes, the brushes have fallen, the sticks have. Been taken care of, but. The building. And I've, I've heard nothing, nothing at all.
First thing we're dealing with is someone who works in the district attorney's office, knows the difference between right and wrong.
And receives mail at the district attorney's office marked personal and confidential.
I just.
So I know she's got a lot of.
Just don't get it.
I wrote right there today, just about, you know, what I saw.
Definitely. I, I encourage that.
It looked like the photos.
It was a lovely home.
It was.
And I think it could be again, maybe, but.
Well, we gave, we gave them, uh, we gave her, um, forty-five days. In which nothing was up, except the laws.
And then fourteen more.
We gave them fourteen more days to allow an inspector into the house so that we'd have some idea of the repairs that are needed. We know. Porch is falling out in front of it. That's dangerous. Uh, I get the feeling she feels like it's an imposition on her to do something about it and she's not all that concerned about the imposition. Posed to her neighborhood by having ice storm in the middle of it. That's the only reason we're involved. Uh, we're, we're not asking her to spend a hundred thousand dollars to fix up the house at this point. We're just asking her to assess. What needs to be repaired and, and to see whether we, how deeply the town is involved.
And have the third party make sure it is salvageable.
Thoughts? Well, you were pretty clear. You.
Yeah.
Days to get an inspector in there and get us some idea.
I, I think we're at time. We've done everything in our power, so. I, I moved to assign a dangerous building order on one thirty Grove Street.
My second.
Discussion?
Well, you know, again, we were clear what we were going to expect within the fourteen days and it was my understanding wasn't on her. Expense to do this. It's gathering information, as you said, to make sure that, um. We're examining it and checking it out. Um, the lack of communication is, is just alarming to me. Um, and I wholeheartedly believe we need to proceed.
Yeah, normally I'm, I'm, I personally give someone the benefit of the doubt. Especially. Yes. Especially when we sat here, it was forty-five days ago and said, communication, communication, communication. We just need someone in there to have a look, ascertain whatever. Yes, 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 sort of, maybe kind of a yes, but. To not make any communication. I mean, we, we just go back to. Yeah, the July of twenty twenty-four. We were talking a long time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, and again, just to be clear, a dangerous building, we're not saying, oh, you're going to trim your, your hostas and or get rid of the branches. It's looking at the livability of a structure and it's impacting neighbors, AKA rodents, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, we don't have a lawn mowing ordinance, so that's not our, that's not our attack. It's look at this structure and say, could anyone live here? Right, safely.
And I believe we, we tried to touch on that last time because she's done work on the exterior, but not. What we'd asked to be done to understand what the.
If the building is safe or not, we just, you know.
Yeah, but what, what just gets me about this is that we have. We clearly communicated what the entire process is and why we're doing it. And how important it is to have a third-party inspector come in. And her answer was, well, I really don't want him to come in. That's not. I mean, it's, it's her right to do that, but it's also our right to say that that's not a sufficient response to our concerns. And so. Sometimes we've seen people snap out of this. Kind of endless spinning us around when we get to this next stage. And finally things that, they finally start to get the idea that they need aid. According to their responsibilities as a property owner. And sometimes they don't. And either way, this is, this is the proper step that needs to be taken.
Well, a motion from Joel to start the dangerous building city against the owner of one thirty Grove that was seconded by. Go ahead.
It can be part of the discussion after the second. So.
Lauren, just, um, what happens next? I guess should the people understand? And you know, there are a lot of people who are here to be honest with you, so, um, what would be the next step? Um, I'm really not completely sure. This is the first time I've had to do this. Uh, usually Brian is here to guide me. Um, we would write to her and tell her she has to cure the problem. It's going to be up to her what she does from here. I believe the order, I don't know. I think the order might get recorded in the registry.
Don't we have to check with Jonathan? Doesn't he initiate the whole process?
Initiates that, yeah. Attorney. That's not what I do. The attorney would do that. Thank you.
Some usually people respond in more, in more laxity to a lawyer.
I guess what brought her in, the last, first time.
You know, I never just had a girl, her dad is a company for a couple of friends and I think this may.
We'll see, we'll see.
I'm not a law.
It's not the path we wanted to take.
Right, exactly. That's what we're trying to indicate.
Not the path to the top of the class.
Alright, time for a vote. Uh, Tracy, are you in favor of the dangerous building order?
Yes, I am.
Also, Noel is, Emery? Yes.
Yes.
Did?
Yes.
Seven and nothing, okay. The hands of the jury. I don't know what the difference will make, but.
Thank you.
We can try.
Thank you.
Alright, going on to new business, the appointment of the election moderator, Warren, for the upcoming election on June tenth. And, uh, we, we are walking through the appointment of. There are lots of them.
Question.
Cindy?
You have to change hats though, Nan, or pins.
Actually pins, yes.
You, you are willing, you are willing to accept this appointment of the moderator. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Uh, Joel, I see Tracy, Tracy's in favor too. We're all in favor. Okay, first, yes.
Good, good Nan, could you just explain your role as a moderator? For thirty seconds.
I work, um, Julie, the interim town clerk under your little offices. And it's to make sure that the election goes fairly according to the laws. That everyone who's entitled to vote comes through, votes properly, is given everything that they need. Um, make sure, yeah, we start on time, we end on time, everything is handled by law. We can just do our best to make sure everything is done right.
Good, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B, application for a poll permit, uh, for Clay Stevens. This is a installation of a, all the transfer station. For a new dedicated phone. All those in favor? Tracy has no, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is it really?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, we have an equipment bid for, uh, two thousand and two GMC Sierra. Very used by the public. Four hundred dollars from Brandon. Go ahead, question, Joel?
Question, um, is there an understanding that it will go within thirty days?
Yeah.
It's sitting, it's sitting there on these mainstream.
Quickly as possible. And it has to be trailing.
Right, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, well, again, I think in the past they thought it was a rental fee and it could stay there.
Alright, so the vote, Tracy, you're okay with that?
Good with it.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Secretary Theater's application for a special amusement permit. Uh, this is an annual renewal. Uh, they have, uh. Not for all their stuff, but for special, um, events. So they have a list of things to go ahead and. Still unique Irish music night, which is for September. Um, so any questions on this? Any motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
The discussion. Tracy, you okay?
Good with it.
Wait, can I? You may. We always ask the normal, said, any problems with Senate, all I need to know. And we're all in favor of that. Alright, uh, a new special events policy. And this is, um, answered the, uh, administrative committee and our, our. Our district committee, okay.
That's what I saw. I, I wonder this one.
Yeah, of course. Alright, so a special events policy, I've got a question I have on that, but do we have a separate fee schedule? It mentions a fee schedule. I never didn't have it in there.
Correct. Um, protect, uh, so the fee schedule will be based on, if PD is required, it will be under their fee schedule for the event. For events and then as well as, uh, the fire department will have a separate fee schedule as well there.
So we're paying for our public safety employees.
Correct.
It's not a permit fee.
Well, there, there is going to be a permit fee. Right now the special event, our special amusement permit. Is for in a building, basically, and I think it's at five dollars, but this is for. Larger gathering type of deal and that's something that's going to be further discussed at a correction committee meeting.
For any event that, uh, occurs on town property.
Correct. Yeah, town owned property, couple of ways.
Everybody have a chance to read the?
Yes.
Also, you know, any questions? Okay, how about a motion?
Move to approve?
Yeah.
Second.
Further discussion? Tracy, you okay with that?
Uh, yes.
That's all? Yes. Okay, that's all right there. Alright, then we have the, uh, the warrants and notices of electric to regions of unit sixty-eight budget validation referendum. That's included in our package with all the signs that.
I want to approve the signing of the R C budget validation referendum.
Second. You trade forward. A, a vote, Tracy?
Yes.
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 Alright, so that takes care of our, uh, new business and town managers before, uh, was emailed to us and also. A hard copy was left at our places at this table. So, um, paving bids, I'll see.
Yes, so paving bids are going out a little late, um, trying to find funding. So the, uh, speaking with Girl Palmer and. Uh, Jeff Chambers, we are looking at. Paving the dump road. So that is currently, um, is within our budget, so.
They will have a pedestal with your statue on top of it at the entrance to the dump. But that is, that is finally taken care of, but you're talking about twenty.
Yeah. It's, it might actually come to fruition. So we do have, I, I, um, was assured by Girl Palmer. Um, that we do have enough time to get the bids in, uh, paving costs have gone way down, which is great for us. Because that was a concern that we might actually.
Oil prices low, paving price.
Correct. That's kind of what we're looking at. Um, so yeah, and so there is going to, for any concern as far as landfill road. Um, I know that it's slippery, slippery, all that jazz. The goal is to remove sixteen inches of it and bringing in sufficient gravel. To build it back up to what we're currently at, so it's not going to be raised any higher. And then, um, putting some kind of rebrand underneath it and then paving on top of that. Obviously. Whoever takes the bid, that is going to be their, their, we're not doing that. Um, yep.
What's that, that cost?
So for landfill road, um, remember correctly, it's around. Two hundred and eighty-two thousand, I believe, is what they estimated at. Originally it was like half a million.
Originally it was about half.
Correct.
Which is why we never funded it.
That's though, I feel like with the budget committee process and everything. I don't remember this being by the order of you for this year. So where did this come from?
So it was talked about, um, and it was something that actually Jack had a conversation with Gold Palmer back in the day and that was upon a. On one of the schedules of the paving contract or the, you know, paving schedules and. The money is in there for the pave, for that paving. So we potentially can get landfill road done. And I believe a one and a half inch shim on East Over Road. To be done this year with the funds that we have allocated, provide the budget passables and that. And those funds is where the price dropped dramatically. Um.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be. Difficult, but we did cut a hundred thousand dollars from the sidewalk. Budget, so I'm a little perplexed.
Yeah, so between, so road paving is a completely separate line item. Sidewalks are completely separate line item and that's just unfortunately how that came to lie. It was basically the budget committee came to the point of. Cause at, well, at that point, there was no roads, um. We didn't have anything from Girl Palmer yet as far as, well, we had very high costs from their four former at the time. And I was not even thinking we'd be getting anything done, obviously. Um, or at least maybe a short section or like a shim. On one of the side roads such as like, um, Outer Essex or something like that. Um, but where the costs had dropped dramatically. Landfill and then one of the roads that were to be scheduled and can get done.
Would like to go back, but we can't go back.
Yeah.
It just doesn't seem like a priori.
I mean, we've talked about it forever.
Well, and again, I think it speaks to what, what has the public works committee been discussing and or working on and or recommending. Um, I believe this is year seven of our ten-year plan. And it's probably been five years since we've been given an update. And it's probably been five years since we've been given an update as to where we're at, what hasn't been done, what. And I know that there's needs to be flexibility in saying, whoops, wait a minute, this popped up. And before it goes over the cliff, let's address it. Uh that can wait another four years. So I think it's um in the best interest of the board is to get information from the public works committee. To say this is what we've done, this is what needs to be done. Um how are we doing? Are we gonna have another thirty year plan after the ten years is done? So that would be my recommendation to public works.
And also something to think about um what has been done in the past. So say the contractor comes in to do a road and they have extra pavement. And say, we ask, okay, well, what are you gonna do with that extra payment? If it drives a little bit of anger or whatever, we have, we could. Could you potentially do this job for us and see what they can wrap in? For, cause they're already in the area with that asphalt, so. Whether it's the sidewalk or whatever, but I think that could be worked out.
Nice, good question.
Go for it.
Having been uh pushing forward for the dump road to be paved for the last two or three years. And here it is, but it was three or four months ago when. We had said, well, even if we pay from the Milo Road to the dump driveway. And maybe this year or next year, we fix the gravel side of it to prepare the base to be perfectly ready. For tiring it the the year after. But now it sounds from what you just said that we're gonna go ahead and do it and pave it, and we're not talking the Milo Road to the. The landfill, we're talking all the way through.
No, no, no. That's gonna cost like a million. But no, this is to get us to the game. Yeah, and putting in proper base and that, so, yeah. And also, just to give a little background information also on that one, um believe we're at like thirty-two feet wide of a. Of a road there now. We're looking at going to a twenty-six, so it gives us a decent enough shoulder. And plus an allowed water to shed, not get underneath the pavement and. Plus, if you don't have a shoulder, you're gonna crack and break pavement off and. Looking for something that's gonna last, and then that's why I even upped. Uh because they initially estimated a three inch pavement, allowed to settle and then redo. And I said, well, why can't we go for a four inch right now? Because we have a ton of truck traffic on there. I explained the loggings, logging trucks and whatnot, and they were like, yeah, that makes more sense to go. A thicker and then go back at a later date once things settle, so.
I'm I'm not concerned about narrowing the the driving surface to one of the main reasons why. Is why it is right now is so that you can choose. So your car can go sideways without hitting the other car. Yeah, we won't notice as much. Yeah, I I and we have been talking about it for. Ever, uh and it's, we've tried. We have tried various different forms of remediation and gravel. To fix that stretch because it is expensive and we will now have to maintain the pavement there. Um and it has definitely gotten better than it was when I first moved in almost thirty years ago. Um I don't have to use four-wheel drive like I used to, uh but it is clearly. Not good uh still, and um. It, yeah, I. I think it's time to just call it.
The clear victory and move on.
Yep.
Just one more for Cindy maybe, and I'm not making light of anything, but if we move ahead on the dump road. And like the road, the transfer station road, um like it's been for ten years. The sidewalk project was maybe postponed for a year. And getting started next year, we have thirty years of sidewalk walk work ahead of us.
I mean, different budget to fight it on, so we've already, yeah, we've already had that discussion.
Okay, continue on.
Yep, so the paving bids, obviously, uh when once Gora Palmer's finished, they're gonna put the paving bids out. So any interested parties are welcome to go ahead and bid on those projects, uh so tell your friends.
So we're looking like August, September?
Uh yeah, to to have that be or at least completed before November. Uh so uh the uh people should have, have got residents and businesses should have received down our. Damn many letters from the damn committee, yep. And there's some in the back also if you wanna take some of them.
A lot of positive comments.
Yeah, it was a good mailing. Uh so yeah, please take your time to read it, stay informed for the upcoming vote leading into June tenth. We have a vote, um so encouraging all residents to come out. From eight AM to eight PM, the gym. And then so and as far as other big news, um. Back in. Fall, we were granted. A grant for electrical vehicle charges, chargers, sorry. So next week, Revision Energy will begin installing three EV charging pedestals that will support six vehicles. Um this will be in Monument Square parking lot, but the lower parking lot, so they're gonna have their own. Uh little section, but obviously it's gonna be more other parking for other vehicles. So that is going to be revenue for us to to bring in. Um and also it'll give an opportunity for folks with EVs. That shy away from this area because we do not have chargers to actually come and discover us. And then spoke with the project coordinator, Michael White, from Main DOT about the Essex Street Bridge. Um he will be reaching out in the next coming months to. Basically give a presentation to select for it and on public as well. Um as to where they're at, right now they're in the design phase. Before it was a conceptual design, now it's actually designed phase. He guaranteed twenty twenty-six was their begin date. Um so stay tuned as far as that goes. And then we finally received. Our draft report from our villages project, which is on the wall there. Um this will be on the website tomorrow, under the village partnership M D O T. And suggest everyone take a look at it because hope to look into or look into the next, go into the next phase of. Uh where this is conceptual, the next phase will be a design case and updating. The downtown from Dunkin' Donuts to Essex Street Bridge, and that's all getting tied in.
No, no, I didn't see any changes from what we talked about back in the winter.
Yep.
Sorry to think about, I took that today and um, you know, it'd be wonderful. Um but I did think if we move forward with the H E V trail work. That there will need to be some consideration for that.
Yeah, so. Yep, so I've um looped Jared in to let them know that there is potential because they um further up were the I T S. They put in consideration for snowmobiles and A T Vs. So if this does pass, you know, pass and everything. Um they do it in other, they've done in other towns, so he he doesn't have a concern as far as. Implementing or adding or adjusting. And it's kind of a good time right now where this is where we're leading into the design phase, so it's kind of. Good working spot.
And am I remembering correctly with the public meetings that they've had on this topic? The discussion of putting wires underneath was just so expensive.
Yes.
That give me a mountain and.
Yeah, it is ridiculously expensive, and that's why wires are gonna be overhead. I even um so pertaining to the Essex Street Bridge, I begged the gentleman, um please put conduit when you go to do it. And he's like, yeah, we can't justify that because, and then also they they reached out to C M P. And they are not in the market to spend that money to put wires underneath the bridge either. Um he did however, say that it wouldn't be an issue um coming later on, it wouldn't be a heavy cost. Um to go ahead and get that done if that's something that is down the road. Um but pertaining to Essex Street Bridge. And whenever we get to Main Street Bridge, that will be also might be asked is, hey, can you put conduit just in the event that we have that? It'll probably be a no, but we can.
It's a ass, you know, millions of dollars.
It's it's a ton of, a ton of money and a lot of work, so.
But people actually bury power lines all over the world. So it's not brand new technology and it's not something out of the crazy world.
I I found out about how that happens. A friend of mine lives in Germany, they don't have local hold anywhere. And the reason why is that local control is about zero. So what happens is the.
State imposes.
The state imposes it and they just send the bill. Um and you don't have a choice, and that's why you pay sixty-something percent of your income. But it does. Yeah, and the power doesn't go out at all.
Yeah, Fort Fort Kent did that in their downtown when they did the rehab and it was, it was expensive, but they're happy to do it.
So donations except.
Anything else else, Tina?
Oh, that's all I got.
Any any uh nuggets to share with us now that you've been on the job as our permanent manager for like four months now, right?
Yeah.
Surprise you so far, or you certainly know what you were getting into?
No, not what I'm getting into. I've enjoyed the opportunities um going out, meeting folks. I obviously knew quite a bit of people already, but you know, meeting everybody. And it's a pleasure, it's been a pleasure so far and. Hope to continue good work and hope for someone else to change that.
What's that? I said, we can change that if you want. You said it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, I have to thank for the public about here. They're they're pleased with the with your temperament and personality and your open. Customer service, it's called. Okay, um Paul's on with town manager support, and we have some correspondence from the school district. Uh closing remarks from members of the public, anything on your mind, yes sir?
Uh did something about dump road, I know we just gave you a drive. They're the most pleasant public employees I've I've interacted with. I don't know if we can throw them on actually vacation day or.
Well, we're trying to get them a flow, totally. We've been working on that for a few years.
They have been so pleasant anytime I go in there, so I don't know what we can do.
They they rush over and take my bounders and throw it in.
They do for everybody, they're either ninety or eighteen, they're they're really helpful.
I agree.
Josh, something you can do is make cookies or muffins and drop them by, help them proud if they want it.
So talk to the town with this acknowledging matter.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um one other thing I just wanted to add, non A T V related.
Right.
I think I missed the the older parts. Um on the corner of uh where Depot, Union and Lincoln Street all meet. There is a storm uh stormwater drain that is located in there. Um I would say in the summer of twenty-two, the Public Works Department um was working on it. And I believe they had to get pulled from it because they they had some other issues going on. Um anyways, plow trucks, um I I've seen two of them in the in this last plow season. Um it's a really big drop.
Yeah.
Um it's three plus feet. I don't know if you guys are are aware of it or not. Um it's causing some stormwater and and backup issues in all the basements in that entire facility. Um and it's really dangerous. Um so I had talked with Brian about that about it um on a couple of occasions. He also said that this would be a good um form to bring it to um so that it can be discussed about that.
Yep, thank you.
Just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention.
Sounds like we need to reset that.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be reset. Um it's still old, it seems to function. Um but when the uh, I think when D O T came in, they shimmed that road maybe two, two, two years ago. Um and ever since that happened, um the road is held up, but that whole entire corner is just bleeding falling in.
Well, I'll keep bringing that to our.
Yeah, we can, we can see this, how it's sinking, but we can't see erasements.
Yeah, it's definitely sinking, but I we've watched traffic that is not familiar with our town drive in there. Um I own the, one of the homes right there on the corner, um having a course across the street and seeing multiple people. Um you know, it's a heavily walked area, most of us know to avoid it, but to anybody that's not familiar with it. Um it could be pretty dangerous.
Other comments from the audience? Yes, all that.
Two quick things, uh first I wanna jump off what Cindy said and thank the board members for showing up to the board parade. It was a great event. I was there front watching, you know, and I had the chance before to talk to Jane and then I'll see you about things. So I appreciate you guys showing up for that. It's great to see the board members getting involved in events like that, so I thank you all for being there. And second, I'll see that, I know we're getting close to the election, and can you put a post out or communicate like? People who who have the ability to be like election monitors as well as you meeting volunteers for people who to count votes. I know that in the past that wasn't really uh you know, message to people, like they can, they can actually be monitors or whatever other things that people. Citizen can do during election day to get involved in the process. That would be good now to start communicating that, so people know they want us to help count or wanna monitor, they can do that. That's the right legally by the state, so if you can get that messaging out, work with Julie to kind of craft that message, now would be good.
I think you have to be appointed by a party and the volunteers are drawn from that list.
Yeah, isn't it supposed to be equal number of party?
Yeah.
Party members. For the. Full watchers and yeah.
Yeah, so we usually try to maintain a balance.
And we're all set for this, this.
I mean, anybody's welcome to be your full watcher, but there's certain areas that stay in and. Yeah, if you wanna actually like staying right around the count, but we try to maintain the balance between. Between the two major parties.
Yeah. And on the same topic, I think of a reminder of the signage and appropriate places to put signs. And what's prohibited and what's allowed, et cetera, et cetera, needs to be out there as well.
Any other comments? Any comments from the circle? Very none? How about we adjourn?